Hazard pay ordinance. The rights guaranteed by this temporary law will remain in fact through the COVID civil emergency. The grocery employee hazard pay ordinance requires grocers and businesses in Seattle to pay $4 per hour during the COVID-19 emergency. And grocery businesses are defined as retail stores that are either over 10,000 square feet in size and are primarily engaged in retailing groceries for offsite consumption. Or 85,000 square feet with at least, with at least 30% or more of its sales dedicated to the sale of groceries. We see that number again, 30%. To be covered by this law, the employer must employ at least 500 employees worldwide and the ordinance would not impact convenience stores or food marts primarily selling a limited line of goods. Next slide, please Bill. And this is Seattle continued grocery businesses must provide their employees with hazard pay on established regular payday when wages are paid. So this isn't like, hey, we're going to give it to you whenever we give it to you that it's added to their hourly pay. And they're prohibited from taking steps to reduce employee compensation because of this ordinance. Within 30 days of the effective date of this ordinance, grocery business must display written notice of the rights of this ordinance in their, in their HR area. So that's, that's a protection that Seattle has put in place that other municipalities have not done. Next slide, please Bill. So this is regarding federal way who is currently paying their employees a form of hazard pay. Well, in federal way, we know that Costco is currently receiving about $2 an hour in hazard pay. And Trader Joe's pays their groceries $4 an hour in hazard pay. So both of those are proactively taking that approach. And it's, it's open ended right now, there may be Sarah or Holly later may have different information on that, but at this time it appears that it's open ended. Next slide, please Bill. So who is covered and who isn't covered? Well, as you've seen in this presentation, other councils have passed hazard pay covering grocery workers in larger chains. While the intention behind enacting these ordinances appears to be to help essential grocery workers, many workers in the industry are left, left out due to the size of the cutoff. So we've seen the 500 employees worldwide, we've seen certain sized grocery stores, as well as the potential financial hardships that could be enacted towards small business. Those, so those are some current concerns that would come up. A few questions, policy questions may be, you may, you may want to ask yourselves, how do we benefit those impacted by the risks associated with their essential work? But are not covered by the type of ordinances currently passed in our region? And secondly, how do we help workers that are the smaller chains without adversely impacting their employers? So if you're working at a grocery store in federal way that doesn't meet this criteria of some of these other municipalities, but you're still at risk, you're still taking the risk, you're still performing some essential service to the community. But if somehow a business had to pay this extra, they just get crushed. We don't want to close a business, we don't want people to lose their jobs. How do we do that? So those are some policy questions you may want to consider through this process. Next slide, please Bill. So as the council has seen in the email earlier this week, we did get a request from the grocery industry, from Adam Adamum, the Northwest Grocery Association asked the council to consider the following, to any proposed ordinance language, that one, that we limit the ordinance to 90 days, which would align with the governor's vaccination schedule for grocery workers. Two, that we limit the ordinance to workers within the business and not include mobile employees like delivery drivers and executive staff. And that we expand the definition of employee to include all forms of retail, not just grocery workers. As other businesses were expected to remain open, just like grocery stores, but their employees should be recognized on the same definition is the request. And that we set a hard start date and time certain to clarify for employers, when exactly to pay the higher ordered wage amount. And that they also asked that there not be what's referred to as an arbitrary number in this request of $4 an hour. So that's a request from the grocery industry. Now, we do have Sarah on from representing grocery workers and she can get into that a little bit, but if Bill, you could move to the next slide, please. So here's some ideas for federal way. While you're considering this, this is some things that some council members have brought up that we've talked to both labor and industry about, and ideas that the mayor has thought of. That we enact between a $2.50 and $3 pay similar to other municipalities, but with some notable adjustments. We expand hazard pay to all retailers that have at least 25% of their business as grocery and have at least 250 employees. Now that's worldwide. Using the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA funds, that we create a grant for businesses that have 25% or more of their businesses as grocery, with under 250 employees to apply for hazard pay funding for their grocery workers. Now, the MRSC has in, in the CARES or not CARES Act, but the, the ARPA does allow for us to do a grant to have pay for these type of workers. And hazard pay would be for an initial 90 day period. And then the council after 60 days roughly, anytime after 60 days could review, we could, you could take stock of where the situation with COVID is and you could either extend or sunset it at 90 days. And then for employers already paying verifiable hazard pay, that potentially no additional hazard pay would be required, or if it was below, say, the $3 amount that they, they could have to bump it up to that. And the key there is verifiable hazard pay. There is some concern in the discussions that, you know, an employer could essentially skirt it by saying, well, you know, we're doing one thing or the other. So these are some, some different ideas that are out there for your consideration. But the, the ARPA funds are really interesting. That grant, there could potentially be a period of adjustment. So if you were to say enact an ordinance like this next month, that you could have a little bit of time so that we could get the rescue dollars in, we're not supposed to get those until around the 10th. And that we could use a portion of those rescue dollars for that grant program so that we're benefiting the workers who are taking the risk. But we're not really punishing or hurting a small business in some way that, that they just couldn't afford. So that is, that's where we're at. Next slide, please Bill. So that's my presentation, council. It just gives some thought provoking ideas and we have our panelists that can add to it. And I'm available for any questions, but this is your discussion and I turn it over to you.
Okay, at this stage, why don't we hear from Sarah Charron with UFCW 21? Welcome, Sarah.
Thank you. Thank you so much for having me. Can I go ahead and share my screen?
Yes, please.
Okay. Let's see if I can pull off this technology. All right. Sorry. Slide show. Slide show. Beginning. Okay. Can you guys all see that?
Yes.
Great. Thank you so much, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. And for the record, my name is Sarah Charron. I'm Executive Vice President of UFCW Local 21. We're the largest private sector union in Washington state with over 50,000 workers statewide. I want to thank you, the council and you, the mayor for your engagement and your leadership in this, in these discussions so far. You've heard a lot from our workers who have been talking about the need for hazard pay. So I'm not going to reiterate their stories. They speak best for themselves and the need for it. But I thought tonight I could talk a little bit about the numbers and some data about why I think this is a good policy. So as you can see, you know, stay at home orders have led to unprecedented spike in supermarket sales. You can see in 2018 and 2019, and then heading into 2020, there was a dramatic unprecedented shift in the sale of food from restaurants to grocery stores. In fact, grocery sale grew, grocery store sales grew by nearly $70 billion in 2020 versus just $23 billion in growth in 2019. And I'm sorry, I'm looking at two screens because I have it all, so I apologize. I'd like to point out that recently we've heard some supermarket chains complaining about, you know, sort of government mandated hazard pay. But I can't recall a single one of them complaining about this government mandate that shifted $70 billion in sales to their businesses. As we can see, and we focus on sort of Kroger and Albertsons, that's also Albertson Safeway, just for folks, it's, it's called Albertsons, it's its parent company. But on a percentage basis, this increase in sales was even larger for the big national chains. In this graph, we can see that the quarterly sales increase for Kroger and Albertsons were in the double digits through 2020. I will focus on these two chains, like I said, because they make up almost 60% of total sales in this area, in this, in the whole sort of Seattle South Sound market. As you can see, the increase in sales resulted in a dramatic increase in profits. We often hear about this being a thin margin industry. I just want to be clear. Albertson's profits more than doubled from about 400 million to nearly 1 billion in just the last three quarters. Kroger's profits increased by nearly 1 billion. Let me be very clear about this. These profits are after deducting all of the additional COVID-19 related expenses, including the temporary hazard pay, paid by the companies provided in the spring of 2020. So this accounts for that. Looking at this one, right? We want to see how much did these companies provide in temporary hazard pay? It ended in the summer, so but before that, and how does that compare to their profits? Let's look at Kroger. Kroger provided approximately 342 million in hazard pay last year, which amounts to just 11.4% of its profits. For comparison, the company spent nearly four times that amount buying back shares of its own stock last year. So as we can see, hazard pay is relatively small amount of money they are paying, paying compared to the money that they spent in stock buybacks. You know, we, we, we hear a lot of important verbiage in this pandemic, who's important, who's essential? It's one thing to talk about who's essential, it's another thing to actually show who we think is essential and who are the people who have kept our communities fed during the moment? Who are the people who showed up on day one without vaccines, without a lot of the things that, that folks are now, now have, right? These people have been working since day one in conditions where we didn't know, know everything. I remember being on the phone with my workers saying, you know, the CDC recommends that we don't wear masks. So you know, that's how far we've come in, in the science and understanding of these hazardous conditions. On this slide, we can see about Albertson spent 263 million, about 21% of its profits on hazard pay. By comparison, the company spent seven times that amount on stock buybacks during these last quarters, three quarters. You know, sometimes I've heard from these supermarket chains that the sales, you know, that, that the sales increase in windfall profits are mostly in the past. You know, going forward, hazard pay will simply be unaffordable. This is false. In fact, supermarkets continue to enjoy sales increases, which though they may be down slightly from the record highs of one year ago, are still significantly elevated from two years ago. Additionally, we would point out these companies are currently holding record amounts of cash on their balance sheets. In fact, even after spending billions on stock buybacks last year, Kroger and Albertsons had respectively 1.7 and 1.8 billion dollars in cash as of their most recent financial filings, four times the amount these companies had at the start of the COVID-19 pandemic. In short, over the past year, as a result of the government mandated shift in sales to their businesses, these supermarket companies have grown exceedingly wealthy and have rewarded shareholders with massive cash payouts. All we are asking is that our members who are the ones and non-union workers, who are the ones in the stores every day, taking care of customers and generating those profits for these companies, be allowed to share some of those benefits. Last but not least, I'd like to address another claim I've heard from some of the supermarkets. And this is that they would be forced to raise, raise food prices if they were required to provide hazard pay. As I've already demonstrated, this is not true. These companies have the ability to provide hazard pay without raising prices. But this threat by the supermarket companies is particularly offensive, given that the fact that the supermarket companies have already raised food prices far above the level of previous years and above the level of wholesale price inflation. This is one of the reasons why supermarket profits have been so high during the past year and is an important fact to keep in mind when considering the dire warnings of the industry and their representatives. Thank you. I would just like to, and I'm happy, I think I already provided this presentation to you all. I have a market analysis, folks who are, who are the experts behind this, so I'm happy to provide more if folks have questions. I do just want to say, you know, I think recently I, I've seen some information that you all have been sent by the supermarkets. I know we're going to hear from Holly later, so I will let Holly speak for herself, but I believe some of that to be corrected. It is just to be clear, not true that we agreed to end hazard pay. That is still a matter of conversation and, and much debate. I would say the numbers that you received around the amount of money that they make is also, you know, I don't think it's constructive to have a conversation about, I don't think anybody here thinks grocery workers make too much, too much money. I, I think for the work they do and the services they've provided over the period of pandemic, I think most of us would agree that it's not sufficient. And, you know, I think there's, as I've said, it stated in my presentation, there's lots of money that these companies have on hand, whether that's money that they're using for stock buybacks or CEO pay. You know, it's not money that they're using for hazard pay. And so that's why we urgently would encourage you guys to consider this ordinance and, and pass it as urgently as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. And Sarah, thank you so much for the, for the collective work of all the folks that, that you represent. You know, this is, the past year has, has really brought, as we all know, tremendous challenges. But we could not have got through the, gotten through all of this without all the dedicated employees who showed up to work every day. So before we have this discussion, I just want to make sure we say thank you again. And thank you very much for your presentation. Counsel, we can, we can do questions right now of Sarah or Steve and/or Steve. Or we can go to Holly right now if, if you'd like to hear from her and then start to ask those questions.
Mayor.
Yeah, Council President Honda.
I think it would only be right to go to Holly at this point to get the other side of this.
Very good. I think you're right. And all right, so I see, is it Holly Cheza?
It is.
All right, welcome. And the floor is yours, Holly.
I appreciate that. Thank you to the members of the council. And I want to start with an apology. It is, I tell my kids, you've got to be accountable for things and I'm going to be accountable today as well. And I want to thank UFCW 21 for the opportunity to correct something that was sent out by me in error today. You received a letter early on that did talk about that the union had agreed with our employers around the issues of hazard pay. I was under that understanding and that was incorrect. And it was not corrected by our members before that letter went out. I own that, that's on me and I apologize. Additionally, there was an incorrect wage scale. We don't know where those numbers came from, but I did receive corrected information. So in the interest of correcting the record, you do now have a completely restructured letter in your email with the corrected wage scale and our apologies for sending out that incorrect information today. And again, my thanks to UFCW for giving me a chance to, to own that today. We do unfortunately have issues with the hazard pay ordinance that is before you. But we appreciate the chance to work with council on trying to figure out how to ensure that our associates are paid a wage that is appropriate for what they're being asked to do right now, as we are all being asked to do and getting through this pandemic. The challenge we have with this is multiple. The biggest issue we have is that it doesn't include industries like Target and Walmart, who are not necessarily union employers, who are not represented or only portions of their business are represented. And they're still not affected by this. And so our union represented industry, which pays a higher wage than minimum wage plus benefits, are the entities that are affected by this. I have one non-union member, Costco, which is off of 320th, and they are only a mixed union organization. They also are affected by this, but they do pay a higher wage rate and they also pay full benefits. And they continue to pay hazard pay even today, a year later, after this all started. So it puts us at direct competition with industries that are in similar work, who were also asked to stay open. And yet have, are not being asked to pay the same kind of wage responsibility that you are asking us to pay as union employers. Also, it doesn't acknowledge a lot of the benefits that we did provide. While I know that there is frustration by the union on how the hazard pay was handled. We did provide a number of benefits, including guaranteed 80-hour sick leave, guaranteed leave for contraindications that was paid for vaccines. I've sent you a list of those issues within the letter that was sent to you all. Most notably, the best way to protect our employees is to get them vaccinated. And we are promoting the vaccines within our stores. Paying them an additional wage does compensate for them, but it does not make them safer in a perceived hazard. I want to end by saying, I think it's worth noting that our own State Department of Health has determined that our rate of exposure at the job site is one of the lowest in the state. We are actually below state government on the exposure level. And that is due in large part to the work that our employees have done in coordination with the management teams for sanitization, for mask wearing, for hygiene, for the plastic shields that are in place, the social distancing and the responsibilities that we have been asked by our governor to carry this weight of being open in the middle of a pandemic. We didn't ask for this, we didn't ask to stay open, we asked our employees to do a lot of lift and we are grateful for them. We are glad other industries are getting open, but this is not a position we wanted to be in to bear this weight. I'd be happy to take any questions. I think you all have a few for me.
Okay, I thank you, Holly, and thank you so much for correcting the record. We are, you know, I think that's, we've all made mistakes or we're under some impression at some point. And I think your analogy was a perfect one, so thank you very much. So, um, council, let's open it up for questions. And if you could raise your hands, I'll call on you. And you could direct a question to either Sarah, Holly or Steve. Steve outlined, you know, some possibilities. I do want to let you know, the idea is to, just before we get this conversation started, the idea would be to come back at the next meeting, the next full city council meeting with a fully mapped out and chiseled out compromise, if you were, or a final product of an ordinance. And that's what the plan is right now. And the plan would also be, even if we had walked it on tonight and had first reading tonight, there'd still be a second reading at the next meeting. We could do actually first, the second reading of something at the next meeting if we, if we needed to. With that, I will open it up. Are there any other questions? Holly, did you have something to say? Okay. Counsel, do I see any hands up? Oh, I see Councilwoman Russo first.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Holly and Sarah for the presentation. So my question is to Holly, knowing that the ordinance has gone through King County in Seattle, how are the folks handling that in those cities and the county that has that in there?
So the, the biggest challenge that we have had, and it's all in the way that the ordinance is constructed. We were given some clarification language from the city of Seattle around removing the mobile employees. So the truck fleets, the delivery drivers, which actually work for us, those types of things. So that kind of narrowed down the ability to make sure we were paying people correctly. And giving us a clear start time is critical. If you pass it with an emergency line in it, we will have associates who are in the store at that time that we have to go back and reconfigure their salaries. So having a start time is important. What I have heard in testimony, and I, I don't presume to speak for the workers, but what has been said in, in testimony in King County was that there were employees in Seattle who saw, or there were employees in King County who saw people in Seattle across the street getting paid the additional wage. They work in an unincorporated King County store, and so they wanted that wage as well. So it is creating some, some weird scenarios where we have stores across the street from one another, one of whom is getting the higher pay and one of whom is not, none of which is part of the scale that is agreed to within the contract. So it creates kind of a weird scenario in that regard.
Okay. I have more questions, I'll let them go, go ahead, I'll let someone else.
Come back to you as soon as we get a lull. We've got that Council President Honda and then Councilmember Sephardos, Council President Honda.
Thank you. Thank you for being here, Sarah and Holly. And where did the $4 come from? Where did that start and why, why $4?
I think that's a question answered better by Sarah. That did not come from us.
Yeah, yeah, that's a good question. I mean, I think just total honesty, I think that's what Long Beach started with was $4. I know many, many, and also it's, it's, it's what the workers have been talking about. They feel like this hazard, you know, warrants that sort of additional compensation for things like extra childcare or extra PPE that they buy themselves, things like that. So they, so I think it, that's where they felt weary and went a little higher. We've been asking councils for $4.
So is this taxable then? It's part of their taxable income? And how does that affect? So in the end, they're not, probably not taking $4 extra?
That's correct, that's correct. It's a additional money that goes on, just like any other wage, wage money that gets tacked on to their hourly pay. And so you're right, they probably take something home less than, and, and you know, all of these, all of these hikes so far have been temporary. None of them are permanent, so it's not a permanent wage that people can anticipate or depend on. It's temporary, given the pandemic that we're in.
I have one other question, then I'll stop, but I do have quite a list of questions. So in the beginning, we were hearing that, and I've had some letters from grocery store workers saying that they'd feel safer if they had a $4 an hour pay increase. I'd like to know how that makes anyone safer.
I mean, I, I think you've heard from our workers who have talked about that, but I'm happy to answer that. I would say that just like our military who has additional hazard pay when they go into hazardous environments, I think it's a recognition of the work, the hazardous work and the moment that we're in. So I think, like I said, they, they spend it on things like additional childcare, additional costs associated with working from a pandemic and day one, not being able to work from home. So I think there are additional costs that are, that, that, that workers incur, especially low wage workers during the pandemic. It's not as easy to, to bear that cost when you don't make huge amounts of money. You know, I can work from home, right? I've been able to keep my kids home. Grocery workers were not able to keep their kids home when, when they were going to work. So there's additional costs. So I think to your question, this is a recognition of the hazard that they're, that they've been working under and the conditions.
All right, thanks, Sarah. Okay, Councilmember Sephardos, you had your hand up.
Yeah, I did, and then I lowered it, but sure. One of my questions is about the timeline. And I do appreciate both of you for presentations and Holly for clarifying the, the letters. My question then is, with the hazard pay, it's, it's temporary and then somehow it's going to go away at some point, right? Whenever that timeline is. And, you know, based on what you just shared with us, Sarah, is there a way to, I mean, minimum wa, minimum wage is not a minimum wage, we all know that. So I just want to know if this is something, a conversation that you guys are having or have had to continue that pay? Because I don't see how you start giving them a certain amount of pay, whatever that, you know, their $4 increase or whatever we decide on, and then going back to their old pay. And I know at that point, we're hoping that due to vaccines and because of healthy practices, that the COVID would be contained at least. But at the same time, you know, we're, we're, we're really saying, let's acknowledge that they're doing hard work. So what is that going to look like? And how are we going to really make them feel good about the work that they do? And continue to provide the same level of service when that hazard pay is yanked from under them?
Yeah, thank you for that question. I think it's a critical one, and I think it's something we're all going to have to wrestle with, with this notion of like essential workers and not just grocery workers. But we, we, I think we all have a new understanding of what it truly means to be an essential worker. Right? And I think than we did a year ago. Maybe grocery workers always knew that they were, they were essential. You know, I think about the snowstorms. And I think, you know, again, it's another example of the people who show up for work regardless of, of all the rest of us, right? And so I think it's a really good question. I have probably more questions like you do than answers. But to say that obviously, you know, as a union and as our members, we're going to continue to fight for wages and benefits that our members deserve. And, and just to note that this, this covers a lot of non-union workers who don't have representatives. And so I think that's an important piece here too, right? Which is that obviously folks who are represented have many different mechanisms to try to fight for, you know, what's right for them, for dignity at work, for a voice on the job, for pay that recognizes their essential work. Non-union workers don't always have that. So you guys are sending a signal to, to union workers and non-union workers, saying that we, we know that your work is essential and we want to recognize that. So more questions and answers, but I'd love to continue to have that conversation with you. And I agree with you about a minimum wage, Holly and I, this is probably where, you know, Holly and I have known each other a long time and we work a lot together. So we have lots of mutual respect and mutual disagreements. But minimum wage is a place where I think we need to do a lot more work. We, we've done a lot to raise the bottom, but what are we going to do for those sort of middle, middle wages? We've done a lot to raise the bottom, but what are we going to do for those sort of middle wages?
Okay, and can I ask one more question?
Of course.
Mayor, is that okay? Okay. Why are the drivers not included in this? Because they do come in direct contact with people as well. So is there any reason?
Yeah, there's a real basic logistical issue. The drivers, as they move, they don't start and make all their deliveries in federal way and then go back to the warehouse. They start in, actually, some of the drivers come out of Portland, some of the drivers come out of Puyallup. They come out of different locations. They will come into the city, make the drop, and then come out. And it is incredibly difficult to track when they come in and when they come out of the city boundary. And we would have to do that essentially manually. There's a system in place for some of it. But it becomes extremely difficult. It's one thing when I know they're at the 320th Safeway. It's something else entirely when I don't know when that driver's going to hit that store and then come out. And that's why we've asked that the mobile workers not be included. The same for the executive staff. I don't think anybody expects an executive to receive an extra $4. But they do come in, they work in site, and then they leave. And so we've asked that those folks not be included because there's no need for them to do that.
And we haven't really made, thank you, Holly. We haven't really made a decision yet. We're crafting this proposed ordinance to council about where that's going to land. But we will certainly consult with council, and we wanted to make sure we've been talking to both Sarah and Holly as well. I see that Councilmember Moore is, thank you, though. Councilmember Moore, you had your hand up?
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. You know, Sarah, I have to say, I appreciate seeing you here, and Holly, thank you for advocating and doing what you feel is important. I totally respect that. And really, I have to continue to do a shout out for Chris. And don't want to mention his last name for privacy reasons, but, you know, it started with him. It started with his voice, his advocacy, and, you know, we hear people, we listen to people, and we try to make the best possible decision. And so I think this is an important policy during an important period of history, quite frankly. And it's all in how we handle things and what type of message do we send out to people that are being in danger every single day. And we all know those stories. We've seen the news left and right. And so, and Steve, I have to say, you've done a phenomenal job of, you know, working with both parties and trying to come up with a, some ideas, trying to come up with some solutions. And so I think it's important. And, you know, speaking for myself, I think it's really important that we do everything we can to really take care of federalway residents that are in harm's way. And I think that's really important. And I think it's important that the council, in my personal opinion, sends out the message to the workers, saying, we see you, we hear you, and we honor and respect you. So, and certainly look forward to having that discussion with my colleagues. Some questions, I think, on the logistics. I wanted to understand this. And so my first question really is, and before I go any further, of course, we have to acknowledge our youngest audience members. So Sarah, shout out to your daughter. It's really important that she's here, partaking in this amazing democratic process. So hopefully, whatever she's eating is good and tasty. So I'm going to keep going. So out of curiosity, you know, how long, and Holly, you're welcome to answer this as well. Anybody's welcome to answer this, but how long does it take for stores to implement the hazard pay?
I can answer, then Holly, feel free. In our estimation, and especially with some of the clarifications that I think Holly has requested, which we in other counties and cities and jurisdictions have been, have been fine with, I think it's relatively, it's relatively easy, but Holly, you should answer from your perspective.
It does take a couple of days. There are a couple of things we have to do. We have to recognize which ships are affected. Also, most of the ordinance has been written that we have to put a separate line item on the pay stub, identifying that $4, and so that does take, you know, a shift. So we need a couple of days to, if your choice is to move forward with this.
Got it. Okay. Thank you for that answer, Holly. And so my next question is, let's see. In the PowerPoint, Steve, you indicated that in this prospective potential, whatever word you want to use, ordinance, it would include Target and Walmart. Is that not correct?
What we are attempting to do, Councilmember Moore, is lower the threshold for the percentage of a location that uses grocery, so lowering it down to 25% for all businesses, 250 employees and up. That handles, actually, frankly, it's for all businesses that handle 25% grocery. How we would enact the hazard pay would be different. If it was 250 employees and up, then that business would have to pay it. If it's 250 employees and below, then what we would do is use ARPA funds to establish a grant that they can then apply for, and the city would pay that company the money to pay their hazard pay. So it's a twofold process. What the intention to do is to cover as many people as possible. And again, that was a suggestion based on what we are seeing out of Walmart and Federalway and Target and Federalway and the percentage of their usage for grocery. If that percentage is not correct, please, either Holly or Sarah, please let me know. But the attempt is not to have an ordinance that only represents a small portion, but if we're going to acknowledge as a municipality that grocery work is hazardous under these conditions, then at the mayor's direction, our attempt was, or is, to cover as many federalway workers as humanly possible with whatever means we can do that with. And fortunately, we do have ARPA funds that are allowed for that. Now, City Attorney Call has some language from MRSC that clarifies that a portion of that is allowable. And I wouldn't speak to the legalities. I'll let him do that. He's far more qualified than I am on that topic. But that's the intention, Councilmember Moore, is to cover as many people as possible.
Right. And I think my last comment, then I'll hold, and then perhaps I'd like to come again with another question, Mr. Mayor. But, and closing comment for this bit, I do appreciate, and I think you obviously sensed where I was going with this, which is, you know, there is a solution for non-represented employees, for them to partake in this process, and for them to get, so to speak, grants to cover this. So I think that is also another positive outcome that kind of sets the expectation of, we're a community of one. Let's look after one another, which I think is really, really important. So with that, I'll hand it back to you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you so much for your time.
Very good. Councilmember Craft? Okay, I'm sorry, what?
Oh, I'm sorry for interrupting. If I might, I would, I do want to thank the council for acknowledging the need to include other grocery, people who sell groceries that aren't grocers. This is one of the only councils that has acknowledged that problem where we're specifically targeted, but those other businesses who were able to stay open and do the same work, their workers are not affected by this, nor are those businesses. So thank you for that.
Yeah, thank you, Holly. I think, you know, when we've been taking a look at this issue, it's about how can we affect the widest group of people and be as equitable as possible, whether they, you know, depending on, you know, wherever they're working and all. We want to protect as many grocery workers as possible, understanding the field that they're in. Councilmember Craft, Council President Honda, Councilmember Sephardos.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Sarah and Holly, for your, for adding to this conversation and your perspectives. I, so I would, I just want to make sure I'm understanding correctly that if we go forward with sort of the ideas that we were presented with today, we will be the only city in Washington State to include hazard pay for retail workers generally? Or has that been done in the state before?
Yeah, I think that would be correct, that this would be the first ordinance that I've seen. And then Sarah can correct me, because we're both kind of chasing each other from city to county. But that this would be the first ordinance that would include others that were not just grocery.
Okay, and then when we say retail workers generally, are we going to define that as the, how are we going to define that? This is my question.
Steve, you want to take a crack at it? And we've got Ryan here as well.
Absolutely. That's a great question, Councilmember Craft. And good, see, this is, this is the thing when you have a prosecutor on the line. This is, this is the kind of stuff that they pick up on. What we're doing, it's not necessarily retail workers, Councilmember Craft. What the proposed idea is, and its idea at this point is to include those locations that would have at least 25% of their, of their business as grocery. And so I think the idea, frankly, is congregate settings. We know that when things close down, it's, we just got notice earlier today, and Bill will, I'm sure, update you on the regular council meeting, but it looks like Snohomish County is getting ready to roll back to phase two. Pierce County has already rolled back to phase two. We're likely to follow. All right, so we could be having another wave. Fortunately, folks are getting vaccinated, but with variants and people getting sick, and just because you're vaccinated doesn't mean you still can't spread COVID. You can. So what we're trying to do is acknowledge and reward the risk retail workers in congregate settings are taking. But those congregate settings, like this wouldn't apply to, say, the tool store. This would apply to where families are going to survive during the pandemic, which is to get food, you're eating at home, you're gathering in a large setting. And to date, other municipalities and agencies have exempted places like Walmart, places like Target. Well, I know during the height of the pandemic, my wife and I went to Target on a regular basis and got groceries at Target. So we're trying to lower that threshold so that those businesses and those workers who are taking the risk for us are put in a position that they are, can be rewarded, and that it's equitable. A lot of the issue with some of these ordinances is they have not been equitable. They've targeted certain industries, the grocery industry, but it doesn't help workers, and it doesn't really help, you know, it's not fair. And so what we want to do is make sure that we're helping workers first and foremost. They're taking the risk for us, and that we do it in as broad of a spectrum as we can, if that makes sense.
No, that does make sense. Thank you for the clarification.
And it's equitable. Yeah, thank you. Council President Honda?
Thank you. So if a company like Walmart or Target, if they didn't apply for the grant, then they would not be required to give their employees the increase? And would it be all employees in the store or just those employees who work in the grocery section? And if not all employees, then why not all employees?
Mayor, would you like me to take a crack at that? It wouldn't just apply to folks, my understanding is it wouldn't just apply to folks that agree to take the subsidy from the city. That subsidy is there for those that would want it, and, but the law would still apply to them. I think that's a very important point, because otherwise, if people, groceries should just opt out. And that, you know, this would be, this is there to say, we're imposing this. However, we've got this pool of funds. We'll pay for it.
Well, yes and no, Mr. Mayor.
All right, go ahead.
So under 250 employees could apply to the grant. Over 250 employees, no. There's, I mean, you're a large international corporation. This is to ensure that we're not adversely impacting small business, mom and pops in federalway, that do have essential workers. So it would be, the cutoff would be the 250 mark.
That's what I was.
Okay.
And again, that's just, that's just a suggestion or an idea that we've put out there. But that was, we're trying to think of an out-of-the-box way to have as much of an impact as we could.
Okay. You know, so I'm concerned that we're only talking about grocery store workers who are essential. I would think of the hospital worker that's not a nurse, registered nurse or physician, like the ones in the kitchen who deliver meals to rooms. When I was a patient recently, I had someone come in my room several times a day who was probably on the lower end of the pay scale, the way low end of the pay scale in a hospital. I would think that person was as essential to the hospital providing care for patients so that they could get their nutrition. And why wouldn't we include some of those folks?
Steve?
Well, we've had discussions with SEIU about this, about, you know, defining what is an essential worker. One of the ideas that we came up with was an equity fund that hasn't been part of this conversation, but an equity fund where we would use a portion of those rescue dollars, that we had a set amount of rescue dollars for the equity fund, and that federalway essential workers could then apply to the equity fund to get their hazard pay. But it would be, we'd have to cap it at some point. I mean, these dollars are not, we don't have $18 million to give in this. We'd have to put a cap on it, and then once it was gone, it was gone. But that was an idea that SEIU had talked to us about, about expanding the definition of essential worker. But I think that, you know, we started this conversation based on what was brought to us and was requested of us specifically, and what has been requested by council members, and what has frankly been gaining momentum in the region. But that's certainly a valid point. I'd love to hear Sarah and Holly's thoughts on that. But there have been internal staff discussions on, you know, doing that through an application process with a capped number. It couldn't be in perpetuity, and it would certainly be something that would benefit. We would have, there have been internal discussions about federalway residents versus federalway workers. Now, in the grocery industry, obviously, not everyone who works there lives in federalway, but are certainly serving federalway residents and benefiting those in federalway. And then not everyone who lives in federalway works in federalway. So you can get down to multiple levels there. But those are certainly questions that we've had and asked as we've tried to form a broad idea.
Or the daycare employee. I mean, not the owner of the daycare, but the employee who makes a low wage to take care of people's children so that they can go to work and be there as essential as the, as a grocery store clerk, because they're providing the daycare so that the clerk can work. I, I think, you know, this is really concerning to me that we're talking about all people who could benefit from this. So, thank you.
Thank you, Council President. Actually, Sarah, you were going to say something?
Yeah, I was just going to say, I appreciate that question. And as a union that represents 18,000 healthcare workers, you're not going to get me to say that those workers, those CNAs, those people who, the phlebotomists, you know, the people who work in the hospitals and in the clinics, don't deserve hazard pay. I will say as a distinction, though, just to be clear, the difference, the reason why this policy came about was because of the Brookings Institute study. And the Brookings Institute study identified this industry as the place where great hazard exists and great profits exist. So that is the distinction in my mind. This is where, as you saw from my presentation, this, this industry is making money, not during a pandemic, it's making money because of the pandemic, because of a government mandated shift in people's spending habits. And so that's why I think it's appropriate to, and I don't, you know, I think it's appropriate to have those other conversations, but not at the cost of not moving this policy forward.
Okay, thank you. I want to, I need to manage this conversation a bit. We've got an executive session that will start at about 6:10. We've got 10 minutes left. I also checked, we don't have any public comment. So we've got three comments on deck, and Greg, Councilmember Brusso, you may want to think if you wanted to ask some of those questions. We've got, actually, we've got Councilmember Tran, and then Councilmember Sephardos. And then I thought there was one more. So, Councilmember Tran, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Sarah and Holly, for your
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, thank you, Sarah and Holly for your presentation. Um, I just need some clarity about what are we about doing? When we first, um, having this conversation, it was about improve the safety for grocery, uh, workers. It's all about the safety, right? But what I am hearing today is somewhat different. Uh, it is about, in my opinion, about the increased pay for, for those workers. So I just need somebody to tell me, what is it that we are going to do? Um, call is, that is it, and I'm fine with it. Uh, but don't dance around the issue. Okay. So that's, that's my first comment. The other comment I'm gonna, I want to make is how is it fair if we only focus on one segment of the labor force? Um, and I agree with, uh, Council President Honda that there are, uh, more people out there that deserve, uh, a pay increase and I am all for it. So how is that fair if we don't include all those people? Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Sarah.
I don't, I didn't have a response.
Okay, all right. Um, okay. So we've got about eight minutes.
Unless you wanted me to respond, I also want to be respectful. I'm happy to respond if.
That's okay. Actually, Sarah, actually, we've only, we've got a couple of hands up, so I want to get through because we've got to end at 6:10. Cause we, I, okay, Holly, did you have something?
What I will say, what to, to answer the councilman's question that would be, would help improve our stores is to get our employees vaccinated. Uh, we would love to work with the city to promote additional vaccinations. We've got pharmacies. We've put bounties on those pharmacies or the shots of a hundred dollars apiece. They get paid sick leave if there's a cancer indication. Uh, the more vaccines we can get into our employees, the better. Um, and so we'd be happy to work with the city on that.
I would, I would just say we're doing a lot in partnership with each other on that. And I think it's, it's a broader effort that's needed. It's not just our employees who need to be vaccinated. It's the general public so we can reach herd immunity so that it's safe again.
That's right. Okay. Thank you. Thank you both. Okay, uh, Councilmember Sepha Dawson and then Councilmember Moore. Okay, uh, Lydia, you're, uh, you're mute.
Thank you. So my question is around the grant, uh, process. So if this was to happen, if we're going to offer grants, how is it incumbent on the, on the store to apply for that grant? And then how do they document and, and is it going to be so cumbersome that they're not even going to be interested in, in doing this process? Which then adversely impacts the people that we're trying to support.
Well, we'll make it to where.
I think it's a steep question.
It is, but let me just say that the goal would be to make it to where it's not, uh, uh, overly burdensome. And, uh, I think that these, these stores, you know, we were able to work with, uh, our retailers to get, uh, for 4.4 million dollars out with regard to aid. And a lot of our daycare workers during, uh, district, we got our daycare, uh, establishments, we got, I think, 10 to 15,000 dollars each, uh, to, to the, uh, daycares to make sure they were, uh, in, uh, in good shape. So we will make it to the point where it's not overly burdensome. But Steve, do you have any other information on that?
No, I would actually defer to Ryan on that, making, uh, uh, making sure that it's a smooth process.
Right. Well, and as far as incentivizing small employers or those who are eligible for grants to apply for grants, the requirement to, to pay hazard pay would be imposed upon all. It would be universal. And certain people would be eligible for grants. And if the company wants to pay it out of their own pocket, instead of applying for a grant, they can do that. But the grants would be, was reserved for smaller employers, I think is the intent.
Okay. So I, I'm, I'm only concerned that if they're not, if, if the grant is cumbersome, they're not interested in applying, then that could be a reason why they would not, um,
There would still be a lawful, a law, there would still be a mandate that they pay to hazard pay. It would just come out of their own pocket.
Right. Which they won't want to do, wouldn't want to.
Which wouldn't want to do probably.
Right. Okay, uh, Councilmember Moore.
Thank, thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. Yep, exactly. Uh, you know, um, uh, Council President Honda, uh, I actually liked your question. That was a, a great question along with Councilmember Tran. And I think it's, it, you're, uh, it's not just about your grocery stores. It, it is about your nurses. It is about your, uh, bus drivers. It is about all other professions. And, uh, Steve, I, I'm glad to hear that you started, uh, those type of conversations, whether they be internal, internal or not. But I think it's a really good point that you're making, uh, Council President Honda, because we need to look at the rest. And making sure how do we take care of holistically, um, our community, uh, and making sure they're staying healthy, strong, um, and being respected as, as workers, uh, whatever profession they're in. So I just wanted to make that comment saying, saying thank you for making that point. I think it's, was really important as well as Council, uh, Councilmember Tran. Thank you for that as well. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, uh, we've got about, uh, and Stephanie, am I correct, uh, that there is no public comment on this?
Mayor, she'd already left to start the other meeting, but yes.
I guess, I guess I mean, yes. Okay. All right. Um, let's see here. Uh, Greg, did you have anything? I know that you had, uh, you got a couple of minutes.
Yeah, I just did real quick. So I just want to make sure everyone, and I know that, uh, Sarah and Holly would know this too, but there is no record active pay going back to, on the beginning when, uh, hazard pay came up, correct?
Right.
Okay. So one question just, uh, this is to pose is to, and maybe Holly and Sarah can answer this question, but you know, hazard pay was given and was taken away. And so what were the reasons why they took it away? Does anyone know?
Sarah?
Yeah, go ahead. I mean, Sarah and I have.
It's a great, it's a great question. It's a really good question.
We disagree. Um, it, it depends on whom you ask and it came in different methods, right? There was a period of time where they were getting an additional pay per hour. There were bonuses given. There were second rounds with some stores. Um, it, it really depends on the retailer and the method. So.
Yeah, I would just, I would just contend that, uh, we disagree that it should, it should have not been taken away. It should have continued. It should continue to this day. Um, we know there are companies, uh, small independent companies in our region, PCC, Town and Country, who are doing it at all of their stores. So we know that small independent ones can do it, um, as well as the ones that were mentioned in the previous, in the previous slide by Steve. So we know people can do it and we would be encouraged if we didn't need this ordinance, if they were doing it just right now on their own. But they're not. So that's why we've come to you.
All right. Sarah, Holly, we've got two minutes left. Um, Sarah, would you, would you like a minute just to kind of wrap up your, your thoughts on this?
I feel like I just did. I snuck it in when, uh, when I can, um, but happy to answer any questions. Uh, Karsten, who's our lead staffer on this, is, uh, out on vacation. So I am available to answer any questions or any meetings that are needed. Uh, really encourage you to act with urgent urgency. Our, our members are thankful that you have taken up this discussion and, um, are, 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 are part of this community and, um, uh, you know, we are really concerned about going back to phase two. I live in Pierce County. Uh, we have thousands of members in Pierce County, in Snohomish County and in King County. And, um, are concerned about the increase, uh, in cases that we are. And so that's why it's more important than ever.
All right. Thank you. Holly?
I want to also thank the council, um, for the chance to speak and also Sarah, always good to see you. Um, and thank you for the opportunity, um, not just to, to talk about what we are concerned about, but also to hear us out on if you choose to move forward, the adjustments we would be, need to make. There is, uh, the ability to individually sue in, in most of the potential ordinances. So if we do this wrong, um, the liability is pretty severe. And so we want to do it right. We want to make sure our employees are paid the, what we are ordered to pay them by, by council, if that's your choice of direction. Um, and I will last say, please visit your local pharmacy, get your vaccine. Everyone on this call appears to be over the age of 16 and we would ask you to please get vaccinated and we're happy to provide that service to you at no cost.
It's a PSA. Thank you.
Indeed.
Sarah, Holly, thank you so much for your time and for the work you do. Council, uh, we are, uh, just about ready to go into executive session. A great discussion, everyone. Um, we, uh, we will get between now and, uh, the very next meeting at the, uh, uh, the next council meeting, I believe on, uh, May 4th. Uh, we will have, uh, likely a proposed, um, uh, ordinance. We'll get that out early. Uh, we'll get that out to the respective parties and, uh, uh, this conversation will be had, um, at a full set of council meetings. With that, we are at 6:10. Uh, I will adjourn, uh, the special meeting and we will go into executive session, uh, for approximately 20 minutes. Uh, for potential litigation pursuant to RCW 4230 1101I. Uh, and once again, that's for about 20 minutes. Uh, and you should have, everybody should have the link. So please, we only have, uh, 20 minutes. Thank you. Thanks, Sarah. All right. Thanks.